Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the January 4th meeting of Planning and Zoning. Could you stand for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a short agenda, but can the clerk do a roll call, please?
Chairwoman Spideau.
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Chairman Richardson.
Here.
Secretary Grant.
Member Perez.
Here.
Member Aton. Member Riley.
Here.
Alternate member Fason.
Here.
Alternate member Childs. School Board member Gilbert.
I think we do have a quorum, is that correct?
Yes.
And the first thing we need to do is the approval of the minutes, please.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
The one minor problem with the minutes, when it listed my name on a roll call at one point, it said Secretary, and just want to clear that up.
I think that was just witchful thinking. We like to put out that appeal for a good secretary. Can that correction be made, clerk?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I'm asking for a motion to approve the minutes from the December 7th meeting, I think.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes of December 7th with that correction that Member Riley pointed out.
Thank you, sir. Any additional corrections? Do I have a second?
Second.
Approval say aye?
Aye.
Disapproval? It passes, so the minutes of the 7th, is that correct? Because I thought we had a meeting between that and the first. I could very well be wrong.
We only had one meeting. Yeah, you only have one meeting in December.
So that's it, thank you very much. Counselor, do we need the quasi judicial confirmation procedures read tonight?
There's no quasi judicial items on the agenda tonight.
That's what I thought, okay. So let's look at consent agenda items, please. And staff, could you just, could you present the 9A Stormwater Technical Manual Ordinance, please, sir?
So this ordinance was brought to City Council, well, we brought the issue to City Council before about some information that was not clear in our code related to stormwater requirements. Staff has drafted this ordinance to clarify issues and to tighten up some requirements. So beginning on page 10 of your packet, the ordinance actually begins on page 12, actually, of your packet. I'll just highlight the main points and we'll try to point to where these points are within this ordinance. So the ordinance addresses when a stormwater should be designed at a 100-year design standard or 25-year design standard. It better defines what a legal positive outfall is. It also requires a net positive water quality standard for redevelopment of properties. It also prohibits wet ponds in the area of critical concern. The ordinance also allows pervious pavement in areas that are outside of the area of critical concern. That's currently something stated in our technical manuals and we're just reiterating that into the code. It better ties in when low-impact development techniques should be used and when they can be credited. And it also includes grandfathering provisions at the end of the ordinance. Going further into the ordinance, you'll see the changes that are provided to and strike through and underline in red. And our city engineer, Quabeno O'Fosso, is also here to answer any questions about this. That ends my summary. I'll try and answer any questions you have, too.
What questions do we have from commissioners, please? Mr. Richardson. But you're about to.
I have a question, why the 10-year, 24-hour rainfall event was deleted?
Can you refer to which page and what section you're talking about?
18, page 18. 10-year, 24-hour rainfall event was deleted from the ordinance.
We found that to be inconsistent with the city's comprehensive plan, and so that needs to be deleted. And so the other sections that are proposed here propose a minimum design standard of a 25-year event, and so that is consistent with the level of service standard in the comprehensive plan. What we've deleted was inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, that's why it's been deleted.
Clerk, are there any cards on this issue, please?
One card, Stan Johnston.
Stan, are you ready?
I had a handout, but you won't get it yet.
Excuse, say it again.
I have a handout, but I don't have time to get it out and give it to you right now.
Okay, just tell us who you are.
So Stan Johnston, I'm coming to you as a professional engineer about this. I do not object to this ordinance, but I object to what's going on with the stormwater. In other words, what I have done is recently I just sent you an email about a felony, a felony, and this case is if there is a false report given by the city of Titusville, that's a felony, and I gave you Florida statutes on that. So right now, as we have here, Mr. Brad Parrish, who has made a report, he's made it to FDEP in the state and it's approved by council regarding stormwater. In other words, he denies this, which I presented a number of times. This has to do with, this is the stormwater master plan, and showing we got big problems here. We got big problems because over in here, there's six, there's six, at least six culverts going under I-95 here. Nine-foot-by-three-foot box culvert, two six-foot-by-four-foot box culverts, two six-foot-by-five-foot box culverts, seven-foot-by-three-foot box culvert between Fox Lake Road and State Road 50. Now, what do they look like? All of them look like this, except for one of them. That's why, in other words, what we're doing is we're giving false reports through by council, by Mr. Parrish, by other people, and by our city manager. Sustainability and resilience, it's all false. And you guys should take, do something about it. When I'm studying, I'm going to ask for another minute on this. When I'm studying.
Take a deep breath, Mr. Johnson.
When I'm studying failures as a professional engineer, that's what I've done in the last many, many hours because I'm getting my continuing education, you know, the failures, is they talk about groups of people who are approving things, like for example, the pedestrian bridge in Miami that failed and killed a number of people when it fell on the traffic. Well, that was, that was, it was called groupthink. There was a huge number of errors made by engineers and so forth, and they had the engineer record say, hey, you know, everything's fine with the bridge, tighten it up, boom, and it falls. So there was many errors done, and so they call that groupthink. But sometimes I'm reading some failures, and the failures are called like Code of Silence by a number of people, or Conspiracy of Silence. And that's what was happening with the city council, and that's what's happening with TEC, and that's happening with you guys, too. Because you're not doing, you're not taking care of big problems, just like I just showed you right now. This has been going on for years through Mr. Parrish. I'm asking for another minute.
I will give you 60 seconds, as long as you focus upon the issue at hand.
Okay, so what this is, is this is a step in a positive direction. We're looking at stormwater, but we need to look at the stormwater master plan. And that's what I was showing you with this, with this poster. The city of Titusville is since, since we had, Sean Stoffer was in charge of this, and when I first met him, I talked about the stormwater master plan, and he's in charge of stormwater. He'd never seen it. Many years in charge of stormwater, never seen the stormwater master plan, which is our legal, our legal, what we're supposed to be abiding by. And I think what you're going to find is when you find, when the city of Titusville reviews these planning and zoning, the rezoning issues and so forth like that, they're not checking the stormwater master plan. I doubt that Mr. Parrish in the last five years has ever looked even at the stormwater master plan. That's serious. So I'm, that's, that's, thank you for the one minute, and I'll let you go with that.
Thank you very much. Clerk, are there any additional cards on this subject, please?
Not on this item.
Commissioners, what questions or comments do you have, please?
I have a question for staff. Mr. Parrish, what do you have to say in response to what this gentleman has just said? Or do you have anything to respond in what he has just said?
No, sir.
Any additional questions or comments from commissioners?
Yeah, one question.
Yes, Mr. Parrish.
Is everyone familiar with this plan?
Are you referring to the plan, Mr. Johnson?
No, the stormwater plan that he's referring to.
We are familiar with it, yeah.
Okay, so you know of its existence, and obviously you're aware of what's in it?
I am understanding that there was a plan in the 60s that was created at some point, but you know, specifics about it, I have to refer to another department about that.
Okay.
I have a question. What differences in adjustments to the table, especially the table on page 18 that we referred to in that deletion of one item? What should we be concerned most with? And I'm asking the question as it relates to climate change, although we cannot predict.
So part of the reason why this is being presented to you and to City Council for adoption is to clarify when we ask for certain design specifications, especially in areas where we know there may be some history of drainage issues and flooding issues, and when a new development goes in there, that they should design at minimum standards that are reasonable to help address any historical drainage issues in that area. If we have a design standard such as what's been struck in through here, 10 years, I mean, I think from my understanding, that is, and some of the other criteria in here that we were trying to address, if we go with what we've got right now, it's not enough to address those issues. As far as addressing specifically climate change, this could be part of that.
Do you personally, does the gentleman personally feel that this is inadequate, these are adequate provisions or items to deal with climate change?
Are you asking our engineer, Quabeno?
Yes, I am.
I don't know if this, I haven't done the research to compare how this performs in regards to climate change. This is specifically for the code, based on stormwater research done in the state of Florida.
How current is the, are those codes? Are they based on the last five years of hurricanes, the last five years of rainfall in central Florida?
Based on.
What do we need to know that we don't know from this?
So this is an update, this is an update from general engineering practice and research that has been going on as far as development is concerned in the state, in our, in our central Florida region of the state, and specifically in Titusville, for at least a decade.
Have there been any changes within that decade?
Changes in terms of?
I think I know what you're asking, Ms. Spideau. I think the, you will, there may be some additional changes we may need to present to you and to the City Council in the next few years. We're not sure yet when or exactly we'll present to you, because DEP right now, the Department of Environmental Protection, is actually working on a new rule that partly addresses low-impact development and other stormwater requirements. So they're kind of wanting to update even the current standards right now, probably to address climate change or other issues, too. I'm not sure exactly, I'll have to look at it. But there are more changes coming down the pipeline that we will have to come back to you to make sure that our standards are either consistent or above and beyond what the state requirements will be.
There seem to be quite a few variables. I mean, for example, homeowner's insurance, redrawing flood plain or flood zones, all those kinds of things. And, and how much knowledge do we as planning and zoners need in order to make a decision if this, this covers adequate planning?
Yes, our stormwater ordinance is reviewed as part of our review for our participation in the National Flood Insurance Program. So yes, FEMA does review our stormwater ordinance, and the last five-year cycle was last year, and we maintained our excellent status. So that is an indication that our codes up to that point were adequate, and so this is a further improvement based on the recent knowledge that's been added.
Are there any other questions or comments? Ms. Riley?
Mr. Parrish, you may have already said this, but tell me again why this is coming up now.
There have been, we require a certain minimum, we ask for certain things as far as design review and minimum design standards with new development, but there have been instances where the code is not very clear to help back us up on some of those requests. We know there are issues that need to be addressed, so we, we are tightening up the language really to make sure that we can base some of those requests on the code without question. I'll give you an example, you know, where there is not a legal positive outfall on a piece of property, they are supposed to design to a 100-year design event. It's not completely, absolutely clear in the code about that. We're trying to tighten up the definitions and some of the standards in here to address that. You can see that at the very beginning of the ordinance, there's a definition there about legal positive outfall. We've kind of added to that definition to clarify that, and then some other standards. But that's just one example.
Are the changes being made going to facilitate limiting pollution going into a body such as the Indian River Lagoon?
Yes, that is correct. We are, so speaking to that specifically, there is a point.
A2, and just to that point, I was looking at this and seeing that, excuse me, I was looking at this and seeing that there's requirement that the property hold more of that water back than allowing it to flow into the drainage area, into our drainage system.
Correct, that is for, okay, so there are two elements to stormwater management. We have the water quantity, which is basically preventing flooding, and that speaks to that. The other element is, as was asked by Member Riley, which is water quality. In that case, we are limiting the amount of pollutants, specifically nitrogen, phosphorus, suspended solids, et cetera. So if you look at 7.4.4, it states there that all development and redevelopment sites shall not exceed the rate of pollutant discharge produced by existing conditions before development or redevelopment. In other words, the current pollutant amount under current conditions, and then let's say the site is developed, now we'll have more concrete, asphalt, et cetera. It's more likely to generate more pollutants, but the amount of pollutants that can be discharged in the developed stage must be less than what was in the original stage. So that's what that addresses.
And this, this may not have any validity, but is there a conflict sometimes between low-impact development regulations and the stormwater regulations?
No, not really. The stormwater, I mean, the LID supplements helps in order to meet some of these, particularly when there are certain site constraints, there could be limitations on the space available. So for example, typical example would be that they could do an underground storage retention chamber, which would provide at least, or better than a conventional pond. It just may be more costly to the developer, but it will achieve those results.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Fason, please. Well, I've got Mr. Grant. Mr. Grant's not here, so.
No, it's me.
Mr. Perez, okay. Sorry.
So what's the point of removing the 10-year, 24-re rainfall event at 7.5, 7.5 inches? Wouldn't that give you another benchmark to sort of keep track of what's going on?
So the 10-year storm is, to put it simply, it's too small of a storm to consider. At this point in time, we think that the minimum storm that we should use in Titusville is the 25-year storm, 25-year, 24-hour, which produces 9.5 inches of rainfall. Secondly, that 10-year storm that was in our code actually conflicts with the comp plan that we've developed over the years, so we had to reconcile that.
Any, Mr. Fason?
As far as impact to future developments, you mentioned that this potentially can be costly, and again, I imagine so, since they have to develop a land that's, again, holding some of this water back versus letting it run into our drainage system. The application of this, do you see this as being a hindrance of any further development here in the city of Titusville?
No, the costs that I mentioned was specifically to a particular example of low-impact development practice, but for the ordinance in general, I, no, it's, some of these things we've been doing as a good practice. We've had others that were in the tech manual but not in the code itself. So this is sort of putting everything together and cleaning up the language, the code, as Brad mentioned, and to make certain definitions, for example, the legal positive outfall more clear to the developers.
Okay, so thanks, so this is really just an administrative function more so than an application of such?
Yeah, mostly, mostly administrative and a few improvements as well.
Okay, thank you.
I call for close to the public hearing, and call for a motion on this agenda item. This is 9A Stormwater Technical Manual Ordinance. Do I have a motion? Ms. Riley?
I move that we approve or recommend the approval of the Stormwater Technical Manual Ordinance.
We don't have to say everything on there, do we, Counselor? Is that close enough to explanation?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a second, please? Mr. Fason?
I second.
Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Member Riley?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Richardson?
Yes.
Member Perez?
Yes.
Member Fason?
Yes.
Chairwoman Spideau?
Yes, thank you very much. Moving on to petitions and requests from the public present.
Yes, I have one card. Dwight Severs?
Mr. Severs, please.
Dwight Severs, Titusville. Since retiring from the Planning and Zone Commission, I think this is the first time I've appeared before you. I'm appearing before you because frankly, a little disappointed as to the Antigua Bay or now today referred to as Tranquility Phase 1 is proceeding. On your first page, you'll see it's on US 1 in north of Nassau Causeway. That's the rather large development that's proceeding, and a plat has been approved for 64 lots on the Indian River and, which encompasses about 4,200 footage of frontage on the river. I recall this specifically when serving on the Planning and Zone Commission in 2018, when we as the commission considered a sketch plat, I made a motion ultimately that some separate conditions be placed upon this, and the staff's recommendation at that time, there were no conditions. And I remember the City Council chastising me at Planning and Zone Commission for imposing conditions. One of the conditions, as I understood, was the engineer disclosed to us at the meeting, it was a 25-foot conservation easement along the upland buffer, a conservation easement. I have a copy of that conservation easement as such. And I'm well aware, having boated on the Indian River for more than 50 years, the condition of that property. the condition of that property over the long term. And basically, as I see it, and you'll see it in the photographs attached, the first set of photographs show adjacent property just to the south side of where the clearing has occurred. And interesting enough, in photograph number two, and you'll see, I took these on December 28. I was motoring down the internet, the causeway, and looked over and saw what I saw. And I had to look at it because it was quite dramatic. You even see fuel tanks where they fuel right along the Indian River, their equipment out there. Third and fourth are immediately adjacent where the clearing and has occurred. It's in this 25-foot, I'm not saying these trees were cleared, but obviously this occurred after the last two hurricanes. And I would say a good 15 feet or more of land has eroded into the Indian River.
Could you continue?
Okay.
Approximately how much time, Dwight, do you think you'll need? Because this is a nice presentation, and we may have questions.
15 minutes. I mean, that's a long time, but I haven't been here in two years, so.
So you'd need 15 minutes of credit. Okay, I can grant that.
And I'll just flip through them. These are like in the middle of the conservation area, photographs five, six, seven, getting more towards the north end, et cetera. Seven, eight, nine, and 10. I mean, this is just along the waterfront, as you will see. And the next picture is limits of proposed stormwater restoration work. There was, the conservation easement was recorded in 2018. And August 22nd, 2022, 2022, the St. John's Water Management District approved an amendment to restore the shoreline. And as you can see, it's going to be a turfed reinforced mat. It will be ripraped stones. And I dare say there probably will not be a single tree of existing trees left. Yes, they have to plant native vegetation. And flipping to the next page, this is a photo from the public records, that is, the property appraiser's office. And you, this was taken March of this, of '22. And this is, happens to be one of the lots there. And you can see how much shoreline there was at that time. This is approximately the same location as photograph number seven. And the next photograph, which is the last photograph of this, it likewise shows the condition as of that date. Now, I realize we had two hurricanes. And St. John's, and I assume the city authorized the clearing of pepper trees along here. And their documents say there is no more than 25% coverage. But I dare say that a lot of the undergrowth around these palm trees was cleared as a part of the clearing. Because we had Hurricane Irma, which is, if you were here, lived on the river, you'd know it was far worse than the last two hurricanes we had. And it's frankly disappointing because I thought the city of Titusville, the St. John's Water Management District, would want to preserve native vegetation as such for this particular area. Even our code in section provides in part, a densely planted shoreline of viable native vegetation, a minimum of 10 feet in width for the entire length of the shoreline. That's what's supposed to be there. So frankly, it's very disappointing to see the St. John's Water Management District, and we have our own codes and ordinances, I assume we want to enforce, that should not be allowing the total destruction of the shoreline. And it is going to be interesting to see how they end up measuring this. Because if they've lost 10 or 15 feet, which they have, of the shoreline, and the lots have a certain depth, they're going to have a crunch. And that will occur. And interesting enough, I believe all the lots fronting on the river have been sold. And they're even mending the deed restriction after they've sold the lot, which is an interesting dilemma in itself. My concern is, are city codes and ordinances presently adequate to protect the shoreline? As you will see in some of these pictures, there was some old asphalt, I don't know whether Riverside Drive, there was a trail that extended all the way to Nassau Causeway, all the way south along and behind where the church is down there. It extended all the way down there. Asphalt is falling into the river currently. There's no buffer, no nothing to keep this stuff out of the river. And are our codes adequate? If not, I think you should be asking those questions. Is, if there's an issue about the permitting process, the inspection process, then those issues should be addressed. Because to me, almost 15,000 people voted in fame, in favor of clean water. This does not contribute to clean water. It contributes to pollution of the Indian River. And I would respectfully suggest, maybe you ought to look at this and ask some questions. I've sort of tried to glance, glance over it, but be happy to answer any other questions if you have any.
What questions do we have from commissioners? Ms. Riley, please.
Dwight, where, where is Tranquility?
Pardon?
Where is that project?
Nassau Causeway, US 1, at that, at the northeast intersection.
Okay, northeast, okay.
Yes.
You know, where the, is it the Police Hall of Fame?
Police Hall of Fame is on the south side of Nassau Causeway. This is across the street.
So the Police Hall of Fame, as you're crossing the Causeway, is on that south side, and this is on the north side.
And I, as a practical matter, unless you have a boat, you don't have access to see what's going on at all. Because they have it blocked off, which I understand they have every right to do.
Were these, were these pictures, Dwight, taken from a boat?
My boat, yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
On December the 28th.
Okay.
So just at the entrance, so if, if anyone has not been out to Tranquility, as you go to the Police Hall of Fame, you can make a small U-turn just past the Hall of Fame and come back and turn up in there. And just at the very, very entrance there, where they have some placards there of what they propose to build. I've, I've, I've been in there, I've actually been further back up into Tranquility. And even further back, right now asphalt's probably going to ready to fall into the water inside Tranquility. Because some of this erosion, it was already kind of flaking off. So I'm sure at this point, some of that asphalt has already fallen into the river in Tranquility.
Mr. Richardson, please.
I would ask, what is staff's reaction to this?
This is the first time Mr. Severs has brought this to our attention. I don't have any other answer to give you.
I would like to ask, I'm sorry.
If that's the answer, this is the first time staff has seen it.
My answer is, this is the first time Mr. Severs has brought this up to our attention. He could have given me a call and given me this information, so I don't have any answers to give you about what this is about.
I would say that Tranquility, there'd be an immediate halt on development in Tranquility. I'm sorry? I would say that there should be an immediate halt on development in Tranquility.
Okay, based on the information that's presented, you should know?
Yeah.
Okay, without us investigating it first?
You have to stop anything to investigate it.
We would certainly investigate it.
Yes, but you've got to stop development.
We, we will look into this, sir. Yeah, this is the first time I'm hearing this from Mr. Severs. We will certainly investigate this, and that's the best answer I can give you.
And this is standard policy for, for someone to come before planning and zoning in a public forum and present this?
There's certainly an avenue where they can present this information, of course.
Are you cranky about the fact?
I'm, I'm a little perturbed that Mr. Severs didn't give me a call ahead of time to give us this information.
It's okay.
Because I don't have an opportunity to respond to it.
Okay, we're just asking, we're just asking questions about it.
Can I respond to that?
You're going to respond the same thing as I did.
Over the last five years or more, I have tried to work with staff. And I have not found it beneficial or productive.
But you did not present this, though?
No.
Okay.
And, and I have tried appearing before city council and been not treated very nicely.
Okay, but you have not been in front of the city council and presented this?
No.
Okay, so.
I mean, staff should fully know what's going on.
Is this the correct protocol?
They go out there all the time, I assume.
Okay, but is this the correct protocol? So everybody's not caught with the, I was going to say pants down, but I think I will say pants down.
The evidence here that you've shown to us is only seven days old. And how much of that time has been holiday? So it's not that old. It's nothing that, that's been on the, for years.
Well, my number one, my number one concern, as I expressed, are the codes adequate? Do they need to be reviewed? How do we get into this situation?
And so.
To me, planning and zoning has something to do about that.
And that's exactly what I'm going to ask you. I'm going to say, at what, at what steps do you, as a citizen, knowing code and being a part of approving part of this development, do you think that, just as a suggestion, do you think planning, what role does planning and zoning take in this? Because we presented it, you presented it, Mr. Perez is here. He's not going to put this in his bottom drawer.
I would respectfully suggest that you ask for a report back concerning these issues. Number one, is the code adequate? And number two, what changes, if any, should be made? And certainly, I understand Mr. Perez needs time to look into this. But frankly, this development is very unusual. And, and I wouldn't respectfully suggest that you hold up development because they have sold all these waterfront lots, ranging in value, at sale price according to the property appraisers' records, from $450,000 a lot to $1.3 million. And obviously, a lot of people are sitting there waiting to build their house. And it's very unusual that, and, and they can request it per the code, to get final plat approval so they can try to sell lots if they bond it properly. And I mean, the unusual thing about this for, for me, as a citizen and looking at the records, I don't know this development company from anybody. But I don't know that I've ever seen a development company here in Titusville from Las Vegas, Nevada, marketing this property and developing this. It's kind of unusual, with all due respect to Las Vegas, Nevada.
We welcome all takers. Mr. Richardson, please.
No.
Okay.
Well, yes, I do have one question. I guess it's of Mr. Perez. When does the Environmental Commission next meet?
I believe it's next Wednesday.
Will you be there?
That was my plan to go to the Environmental Commission because I think they should be looking at this.
This will be a big issue for them.
Who are you pointing to? Oh. Was she waving or something?
Counselor.
Counselor.
Thank you, Chairwoman. I heard the speaker ask a couple of questions to this board. I'd like to know if you are asking the commission to ask council to research these items, or if you'll be going before city council to ask them for staff direction for these questions.
I will not be going before council.
Okay, so you're asking Planning and zoning to make the request on your behalf for city council to act on those questions?
And that was, Counselor has pinpointed my, because I'm not sure that that's our role, is it?
Well.
Can, can staff clarify that for me, please?
You may submit a request to city council to have a certain topic investigated by staff, yes. You would not, as an individual body, direct staff to do certain research, but you would have council respond to that request.
Is that you singular or plural?
You as a body, the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Oh, it's plural, okay.
Does that make sense?
It, it does. I, I just, and so how do you do that?
This would be an appropriate time for the commission to have discussion.
Okay, Mr. Richardson.
Well.
First of all, let me, before Mr. Richardson, Mr. Severs, do you want to stay at the podium for further questions, or do you just want to stay available, sir?
When the chair, whatever your pleasure.
Okay, okay. Mr. Richardson, next, please.
I would defer to Member Riley before I'm recognized.
Member Riley.
Mr. Severs, could you tell us in a nutshell what it is that you think should be done by city council?
Well, number one, if there were any violations by a contractor or the owner, I think appropriate action should be taken.
Violations regarding, just generically?
The permit that was issued and whether or not they were in compliance with the permit.
I'm going to interrupt Mr. Wright, but I've never said that, that, I never thought that that was within our purview. Am I incorrect? I mean, I, I don't, Planning and zoning investigation? I, I, I don't know whether that's within our purview or not.
I believe what was being said was that we can make the recommendation to council, okay, to undertake.
I'm going to ask counsel, I'm going to get, Counselor, again, is that within our purview?
You can always make a recommendation to city council, yes.
So it should be recommendation that they investigate or they continue their inspection of development?
I would, I would say investigate the matter presented at the meeting. It could be that simple.
Does that have to be in writing?
Well, the motion ends up in writing, no matter.
Okay, okay. Yeah, Mr. Faison.
You know, these, these developments were, or this particular development was hit by, by hurricane erosion. And so when we're asking, or when the gentleman mentioned about there being violations, those violations may not have taken place due to their negligence, but due to the erosion. After the hurricane Ian, whatever, the last one came through, I drove down the Nassau Causeway, and I noticed how many trees were laying in the water along Nassau Causeway, okay? So I didn't go up into Tranquility to see what erosion had happened there, but I can totally see the, the erosion along Nassau Causeway. Again, when he mentions violations, this was a natural, a, 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 a natural act that had happened. I, but I do think that we, the city ought to go look at that. I'm sure they have been out there, but look at it and see what has transpired, how that will affect future development, and, and that's, and so forth. But again, this was a, a natural disaster, not negligence on the developer. That's, that's all.
Especially.
Mr. Richardson.
Especially how the buffer is affected. It's almost disappeared.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Perez, please.
Yeah, I was just going to make the note that.
Yeah, I was just gonna make the note that, yeah, I, I would expect more damage to be on the causeway than further up just because of all that extra vegetation that's pulling together, if you will. If you have just one row of trees, that's gonna be very, very vulnerable, I think. You know, especially to a wind that has nothing. Okay?
Mr. Riley.
Mr. Seversen, we want to thank you for at least bringing that to our attention. Again, it's something that I saw. I don't know if anyone else had seen it. It's something that I, I have seen. I just didn't, I didn't personally take note of it to bring it to anyone's attention. So I do want to at least thank you for that. I wish you hadn't blindsided Brad, though, you know? I, I think he did deserve a heads up for that, so, but, but thank you for bringing it to our attention.
And as I tried to say in the beginning, and I may not have made it clear, in 2018, when this came up, I was happy to hear that there were going to be a 25-foot conservation easement, and the area along the river would be preserved. And I now see what is occurring.
Change.
Thank you very much, Mr. Severs. And that was you, Mr. Fason. Do I have a motion related to this? Item, please. The item, the, the motion should be communication with, I may need help with this, Counselor. It's a, it's a, we can't make a motion to city council, recommendation?
A motion will be made for a recommendation to perform a, a look, to look into the matter.
To continue to inspect the building sites, especially along the shoreline?
You could just simply say to research the matter that was presented by, by Citizen Severs at the meeting of the state.
Excellent. Did you write that down? Did someone write that down, please?
I'll take a stab at it.
Okay.
Member Riley.
Member Riley went to school for a long time. I'm gonna rely on her. And she can spell, too, okay? Member Riley.
I, I move that we make a recommendation to the city council to investigate the matter regarding tranquility phase one that was brought to our attention at the, at the January 4th meeting by former Chair Dwight Severs.
I think I'd say Citizen Severs.
Citizen Dwight Severs. And to research it and to take action if violations are found that are not in compliance with the permit issued for tranquility phase one.
Do we need to report back? Ask for a report back?
Ms. Spado.
Yes, sir.
I can commit to doing this research. I mean, any, any violation reported to us, we investigate it. So we would certainly do this regardless of there's a motion given to city council, a recommendation for this anyway.
I think we just need another exclamation mark on that. Do I have a second on this motion? Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Roll call vote, please.
Member Riley? Yes. Member Fason?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Richardson?
Yes.
Member Perez?
Yes.
Chairwoman Spado?
Yes. I wanted to take the time to thank Citizen Severs on this critical and to present visually, which meant a lot. Thank you very much. I, I would hope, though, Brad, that, did you get a copy of this, too, with the pictures? Yes, okay, so that might, you know, add some weight to this. Thank you very much.
Chairwoman?
Mr. Fason, please.
Who will be presenting this to the, to the council? Will Mr. Perez be responsible for presenting this to the council?
Yeah, this is.
Yeah, this will be presented to city council. Whatever motion, recommendation you make to the council gets supported, we'll do them.
And TEC, it'll be on TEC's agenda at the next meeting, right?
I'm pretty sure that he indicated he would be present to make his presentation.
I heard, I heard that, okay, excellent. Member Riley? No? You got it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. City staff with petitions and requests?
Petitions and requests.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Stan Johnson, and would you hand that out, Laurie? I got a handout here. I'd like you to start the clock when you get the handout. So this is the handout that I want to give to you. Okay, ma'am, may I have three minutes on this, at least?
You can have three, yes.
Okay, Stan Johnson, 860 points, Set Avenue. And what I was talking to you about on this other issue was, I gave you these, showed you these two posters. And as a professional engineer, I'm concerned about this because this, this has to do with the law that I'm supposed to obey, and everybody else should obey. And that is the law that water flows downhill. The city of Titusville violates this law repeatedly. And in false reports and, and what they're doing with comprehensive plan and so forth, the city violates the law that water flows downhill. I find this disturbing. I sent to you on December the 13th, an email that has to do with some ugliness, and it's titled "Violation of Laws by Public Officials," Florida Statute 838 and 918. Does this apply to you? And this has, has to do with felonies. The felony of, of making a false report by a public official, and you are public officials. The, our council has repeatedly made false reports. For example, the false report recently of, I've got many pictures and photos and witnesses of, of a sewage spill that went into nine city streets and into a city park and, and into the river. And the city, the city denies it. They deny it, deny it publicly, and yet it's what's, what we call is open and notorious dishonesty, fraud. And this is my reading of this. I'm not an attorney, but from all appearances, to me, this is a false report, just as a false report they had about the sewage spill, another sewage spill, another hurricane, and, well, not hurricane, but sewage spill at Sandpoint Park. So I want to remind you of that. And this has to do with a number of, of violations by the city of Titusville and open and notorious dishonesty. And it has to do with the storm, storm management plans here, the sewage spills, and also errors in SNJ Oaks. SNJ Oaks is a, is a project that was approved, that was approved, and in spite of, for example, is that there's overhead electric not shown on the survey. There's this, there's a storm sewer that goes into the property. It's shown on the survey, not on the plat. These are supposed to be shown on the plat. I may bring this attention to the city of Titusville, and, you know, a year later, it's still a problem. It's not done, it's not corrected. So why in the world is the city doing this? I can't give you an explanation, but whether it's, it's one of these things like Code of Silence, or whatever it might be, but we're in trouble. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And don't forget the right to clean water petition. Thank you.
Continued action for petitions or requests, city staff, please.
So on page 20 of your packet, I've included a summary of a few items that are going on that you should be aware of. The first one is the city's Affordable Housing Advisory Committee recommended the city council adopt the enclosed ship incentive strategies, and a resolution to adopt incentives will be considered by council on January 10th. What this is, is a list of recommendations from that committee to possibly amend the code to make it more easier for affordable housing projects to move forward. And you'll see that on page 22 of your packet. One of the things I wanted to bring up to your attention is new inclusionary zoning and a new community land trust. Those are new incentives that were proposed this year and will be considered by city council to adopt as part of the resolution. The other ones are routine recommendations and incentives. I want to bring this up to your attention because these are things that probably will come before you as ordinances based on our resources and our time. So we have some work ahead of us. The other thing I wanted to bring up to your attention was a Community Resiliency Education Survey. This is a survey that is funded in part through a grant from the Florida DEP, and it's being conducted by the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council with the assistance of the University of Florida's IFS Extension Office. And the purpose of the survey is to better understand the community's knowledge of local threats and resiliency techniques. This is a survey for the residents, community of cities of Titusville, Titusville wide, to be able to take this survey and tell us what they understand about resiliency in Titusville. And then the regional planning council staff will help us create an education program based on the results of that survey. We've already conducted that survey for city staff, and there's been some, we've had some very good responses from that. And we've also had some already, several very good responses from the community as well. The next thing I wanted to bring up to your attention is, I'm sorry, back to that resiliency survey. You'll see a QR code and a link to that on page 23, I believe, of your packet. The next thing I wanted to bring up is the Fiscal Year 2024 Strategic Planning Community Conversation, which is scheduled for Saturday, February 4th at 9:00 AM. And this is a city council event. This is a conversation where the council members are there with a facilitator to work with the public to figure out what the priority, priorities should be for the year. That's usually to kick off the budget process. Yes, sir.
And in years past, we were asked to be at that event.
Will, will emails be sent out?
Announcement will be sent out, yeah. And I'd highly recommend attending if you would like some input on how, on the next, on this year's goals.
Thank you.
The last thing I want to bring up is the Shape the Future Titusville Comprehensive Plan Public Workshop Event, which is scheduled for Tuesday night, February 21st, at 6:00 PM at the Senior Center. There is a flyer at the end of your packet on page 23, 4, excuse me. And if you recall, Kanan Associates was our consultant before, helped us out with the draft 2040 Comprehensive Plan. They are back to help us out with this process. If you recall, city council approved recommendation to not go forward with that plan, but instead to incorporate certain parts of it that are favorable to be included into the current comprehensive plan. So this is a conversation about policies related to the future land use element, the transportation element, and the housing element of the city's comprehensive plan, and introducing new policies from that draft, and maybe some additional policies as well. As part of that workshop, they will also do a community, I'm sorry, an engagement process where they will work with the public to come up with some ideas and vision, ideas of what could happen on some of the key areas of the city to help inform those decisions. So for example, they'll look at an area of the downtown. They'll also look at an area of a commercial quarter, like Garden Street or Cheney Highway, a segment of it, proposed concepts of what could be there. And those ideas could help inform the decisions that would be proposed or policies that would be recommended inside the comprehensive plan and also in the code. So it should be an interesting event. That's all I have. I'll try and answer your questions you have about any of those events.
Are there any questions from commissioners on any of these items? Mr. Fason.
Thank you for the new inclusionary zone and the new community land trust. The only question I have is, why are we relegating this to only certain market rate developers and not all market rate developers?
I'll be where you, where you are referring to, where are you seeing that language?
Right there, which is new inclusion, inclusionary zoning. It says the tool would require certain market rate developers. My question is, why only certain and not all?
That's a good question. This is not limited. This is just a recommendation. So if this is brought up, we could certainly go back and maybe do something more broad if, if, if the statute obviously allows us, and if the, the city is obviously welcome to it.
Okay, and then the only last thing?
My, my feedback off of that question is just that certain developers may, it says certain because there's probably going to be qualifiers, and some may not be eligible, and so they would be disqualified. And then the certain would be referring to those that were qualified to participate in that type of incentive program. That's just my initial reading off of that. And then both with the new community land trust, these are two concepts that haven't been implemented yet, but they are being brought forward.
You know, I, I was, I was applauding the, the community land trust, but I, I don't, I don't accept the answer for all developers. And then the, the only other thing is, will there be any changes made for ADUs?
We have an ordinance for accessory dwelling units now.
Right.
Are you suggesting, are we, will we change that existing ordinance?
Well, it just wasn't addressed in this document, and so I was only asking, will we be reviewing that as well to see if we can broaden that, if, if possible?
Could, yeah. The commission desires to make any changes to that. I believe, what I recall from the conversations with the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, and Mr. Richardson can confirm or not, is that that was already addressed, and so was not repeated as an incentive.
Mr. Richardson.
I think we need to take a look at that again, the P&amp;Z does, because the need for accessory dwelling units has increased, especially since the Orlando media is making a point of changing, cities changing their ordinances to allow more accessory dwelling units. Like, not just mother-in-law suites, but accessory units for mothers-in-law. A lot more accessory units and, and with less square footage requirements. And we need to look at that. That needs to be on our agenda sometime this spring or something, to really take another look.
Doesn't that go in with the tiny housing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We brought that up as a member of the Affordable Housing Committee. I'm P&amp;Z's member on that. That came up, and we debated that several times, and I think we should, too.
Is that for your, is that for you, Brad?
I think what Mr. Richardson's saying, and please tell me if I'm wrong, is that you, it's a topic of discussion the commission should have. And then whatever you decide to do, you could make a recommendation to city council to consider making changes.
I think we need to workshop the whole thing of accessory dwelling units. What we mean by, what other, other cities are doing about it. We need to have a workshop or an item on our agenda for discussion. One of these agendas that's like this one.
Yeah.
Not very full.
Sound good, Brad?
Is that, yeah, we can put that on your agenda for discussion.
Does that need, does that need a motion?
Just the consensus of the, of the commission, if you'd like to have it on the agenda, we'll add it on there.
Everyone say a, yes? Okay, thank you very much, okay? So be it, okay. Thank you very much, Brad. City Attorney?
There was a resignation last month. If any of y'all know anyone in the community that's a resident of Titusville who would be interested in volunteering on the Planning and Zoning Commission, or the Titusville Environmental Commission, or the Board of Adjustment and Appeals, we have open openings, and we have applications to be completed by your friends.
Thank you very much. And this is where I have something to say. We have been told, not so much by you, Brad, but by Eddie, that we would have extensive agendas. And you don't need to, you, you don't need to comment upon that because we enjoy the short ones, too. On the other hand, we've got valuable people that have resigned, and we have new people. This is a serious fear of mine. A new, more than one new commissioner is sworn in and then presented with an extensive, in-depth agenda and no knowledge at all. And people start talking in initials, going to the agenda star. And I want to tell you, that's not a good way to get people in. Because when you come in, I mean, it's like, I don't know what's going on here, and I don't know what they're talking about. And we're getting into. And we're getting into areas of development where people need to make informed choices and make intelligent choices. So help us out here. What's the first step? Is it council proposes membership to the commission?
Well, council appoints commissioners.
Right, right. And do they go door-to-door, knock on the door? Or is it like councillor said, if you've got friends, bring them down?
Yeah.
Apply for, apply for some paperwork. Where do people get their paperwork?
The clerk's office. And--
Okay. Is it difficult and complicated?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So if we have friends that look like they can read right, sit up in the chair for more than an hour, okay? Okay.
I acknowledge your concern, and we will do our utmost effort to orient the new members.
Yeah, I think that, I think you're using the right term, orient, just that orientation. And to be, continue to be cognizant of using too many initials. I appreciate you. Any additional comments from any members, please?
I don't think you're asking for reports from us. I don't think-- Can the public just say point of order?
I don't think so.
Point of order.
Well, there's a lot of things going on that don't come before P&amp;Z, and we're always asked about them. Like, take, for example, the lot clearing on Hopkins Avenue behind St. Teresa's.
Wager Avenue and South Street.
That don't necessarily come up to us, but we're asked them in public meetings that we go to, social gatherings. What's going on here and there? So can you give us an update, what's going on in Titusville? Because we don't want to wait for that magazine, that glossy magazine, to come out every other month that reports on things that happened six months ago. Just give us an update. And no pictures, anything like that. Just tell us what's going on with development along Titusville. And whether, how many site plans you're behind, just some statistical data.
So in addition to the magazine, we do have the online map. It's interactive map. It's up to date now. We have everything on there. And we also have a quarterly report that we'll do, that we do ourselves, that we can also provide to you that shows all the site plans that are in review and the status. But it sounds like you're looking a little bit more information as far as how far behind we are. Okay.
Information that's a month or two old.
Well, frankly, sir, I mean, we can't give you that kind of turnaround every month. I'll try my best. If I have a new development that comes in or new, I could probably highlight those. We could probably do that.
We don't like people on Facebook to tell us what's going on. Because they dramatically say, what's your opinion of this? Why don't you know about this? Oh, my God, did you approve of this? And we don't know what they're talking about.
My advice in that scenario is to call the city staff person who may be associated with the project when you read something so that you can become educated at the moment that you read it. Because we can't predict what's going to come up on Facebook and what you're going to read, and--
And we can't either.
And so we would just ask that you call the city staff person upon reading something that you find confusing, and we will help to clarify it. And then if you think that it needs to be brought to the P&amp;Z, you have that discussion with the staff person about sharing that information about that particular project at the next meeting. We can do that, but I think that's the best way to handle your concerns.
Thank you. So what's at the corner of South Street and Wager?
Two residential lots.
And it's never come before us because it doesn't need to?
Doesn't need to.
Okay. What's going on behind St. Teresa's?
You would have to call someone in the building department to get more information on that because I don't know what that project is.
That's near the Gator Bar, isn't it?
It's not somewhere I go often.
A popular watering hole on Hopkins. No, but I've written, I think I've had some crime reports of that location.
Yeah, so the, what, the St. Teresa's project apparently is based on a building permit. So the city processes, you know, I think at last count this year, we've over more than 4,000 building permits. So it's not on here because it's not a site development permit. It's not a site plan. So it's just something that was simple, basically.
So some, what you're saying in simple language is sometimes you need to know about this, and other times, you're really, it's none of your business.
Oh, man. We try to have available online as much as, we try to update it weekly. We have a staff member that routinely looks at what we have as far as site development permits, which are major improvements that require a site plan or any kind of land use change online on the map so you can see what's happening or at least see the status. What's changed on there? I could probably come back to you or we can get to you. Here's what's changed since the last time you saw this map. That's probably what we could do. But as far as small things that might be added on existing developments without requiring just a building permit, we do not keep a report on that on specifics. Now, if you have a specific question about a particular site, we can go back and find out for you.
Okay. And Chelsea's suggestion was positive. Thank you very much. Any other additional comments from commissioners? I'm going to call adjournment of the-- I'm going to call adjournment of the January 4th meeting of Planning and Zoning.
I'll ask the council.
Speak at the podium, sir. State your grievance, one sentence, one sentence.
Point of order on 11A. I had a card on that. And point of order on the voting on Mr. Severs' motion. Those two motions were, I have cards on both of those issues.
There's no discussion from the public on staff's report.
There was a consensus vote.
There was no vote. They accepted staff's presentation.
That's not a vote? Okay, how about the other one? The other one was a vote. That was Mr. Severs. You came here and you voted on, you made a vote. He's going to make, he's going to go to council, and he's going to report on the Tranquility Bay. That was a vote that was taken, and I have a card in there that says, any new item. So you violated--
Chairwoman, would you like to let him speak?
Mr. Johnson, do you have a comment?
Absolutely.
Will it last for three minutes?
Yes.
And will it be totally focused?
It should last for three minutes.
Will it be totally focused on the issue, sir?
It'll be totally focused on what's going on here.
On Tranquility Bay?
Well, we can, we can talk, no, listen here. What you're doing is, you, this is what I do not like.
I am not here to argue with you, Mr. Johnson.
Why don't you listen to me?
Nor will you be out of order, sir. I do not accept that.
Mrs. Spindel, you should listen.
I follow, I follow procedure, sir.
You didn't.
Would you like to have three minutes to talk about Tranquility Bay and the concerns that a citizen has brought forward?
I can do that.
Three minutes, sir.
All right. Okay. This item came up. This item came up under petitions and requests for the, from the public. I have a card. I have a card that says, any new agenda item I want to vote on. I also had cards for 11A, B, C, and so forth like that. Now, you clearly, clearly, Mrs. Spindel, you had a vote on petitions and requests from the public from Mr. Severs. Clearly, you had a vote on it. I have a card, and you said you followed rules. You did not follow rules. I have a point, I don't know about you following rules. You're not listening to me. I know you're not listening to me. But the point is, is that the city of Titusville should follow Robert's Rules of Order. And the city of Titusville, for example, under other meetings, which you're not listening to about, has repeatedly violated this Robert's Rules of Order. And you should be listening to this because that's what, that's what the P&amp;Z has done on that Tranquility Bay. I think that what you should do is what you've done. You voted on. I am voting for and supporting Mr. Severs' request for you to look into this issue because I don't think you realize the importance of this matter. He's talking about maybe people won't have enough really land to build what they want to. That's the way he expressed it, the way I heard about it. That's a serious matter. When somebody pays a million dollars for a lot and they found out, hey, a good bit of it's washed away. Or the 25-foot conservation area now applies, I don't know, maybe it now applies because your property can be removed by water, by wave action, riverine or weather it might be. And the lots can be smaller because I know of lots that are now, they're underwater. They didn't used to be underwater because of wave action. So it's an important issue, and it's an important issue for you guys to follow Robert's Rules of Order. I wish there was some way because what Mr. Diesel has allowed me is I raise my hand, and he's supposed to recognize me because I have a point of order. I do not legally have the right to say point of order. I did it because I do not think that you should continue to violate these laws. You should. You should obey the laws, Robert's Rules of Order. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Again, I adjourn the meeting for January 4th, 2023. See you in a couple weeks.